Our Perry City Council meeting this evening. We're going to, before our meeting starts, ask Nathan to come forward and lead us in an invocation. Nate Kingsley from Beantown Community Church.
Thank you all. And Father, I thank you for the city that I get to live in. As much as I said I didn't like small town after high school, Lord, I've come back and I love our town.
Amen.
Thank you for our governments, that we have a society of law and order. And thank you for those who have taken up that responsibility, serving their terms, to give them grace tonight and wisdom to think, to act, and to decide. It may be for the good of the people of our city and for the glory of God. Amen.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Tim, are you all set? So when we get to you here, ready to rock and roll?
Thank you.
Tim, are you all set? So when we get to you here, ready to rock and roll?
Thank you.
We can do this one.
I'll just take them from you. I don't still.
Did you want to say which one's going to be the first?
I never got it.
Are you good?
No, that's fine. Anyone else coming?
Thank you. Did you want to gavel his name or did you want to hand him?
Oh.
Make her sit here and she just takes my word. We're a little early, but we'll go ahead and get started with the meeting. So at two minutes to seven, I call our meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, would you take roll call?
Mike Maddow.
Here.
Chad Fuller.
Here.
Larry Mamber.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Here. Looking for approval of our agenda.
Except the agenda is adopted. What is it? I moved that the agenda be adopted. Can't read.
We have a motion from Bob seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now I'm reading an approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the August 3, 2023 regular reading.
I have one minute of the meeting minutes.
Okay.
It's minor. On the TNR in parentheses, Shirley, you just wrote.
Which page is that?
Uh, two. Very bottom, last one.
Yeah.
This is TNR, then you put parentheses, traffic rescue return.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion from Chad, seconded by Bob. Chad, are you okay with the amendment from Bob?
Yes.
With amendment made by Bob, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We'll now move into our pre-approved reports and presentations, and we do have representatives here from the Community District Library to come forward and give us their annual report. If you would come right to the.
Sure. I've got the report.
Oh, I see.
I'll make it short and sweet because I know you have a lot to discuss. Thank you. If anybody out there would like one, these are the library statistics. Thank you for having me. I'm Jamie Cromlin with Community District Library, and this is Carol Pavlinka. She's the branch manager at Perry. I'm here because I at least make a visit at least once a year to discuss the annual report. We wrapped up our fiscal year at the end of June, so these are all the important statistics that we like to keep as librarians. And I won't go over everything, but I tried to keep it pretty simplified. District-wide, we had over 62,000 people walk through the doors of all of our branches. We have seven library branches, including Perry. And I do have Perry-specific statistics if anybody wants them for their records. About 8,000 people logged into our computers and Wi-Fi. We continue to increase our digital collection, so right now we're having over 18,000 people access our digital content, downloading that online. That's our eBooks, e-audio books, our very popular music movies, that kind of thing. We have two platforms where you can purchase, or not purchase, but borrow digital content from, and that increases every year. We're over 81,000 checkouts district-wide. We lent out over 10,000 items to other libraries within the state, and our patrons' interlibrary loan or brought in and requested over 13,000 items from other libraries. So interlibrary loan is very important and continues to be accessed even though we still have, even though we have digital collections. Let's see, we had 650 programs over seven branches that we offered, and, you know, about 2020, when everything hit, we obviously didn't have a lot of programming, so we're really back to pre-2020 numbers, both door traffic circulation and the number of programs that we offer. So that's good news. And we had about 7,200 people attend, so that's fantastic. And then I do have some pictures on the back. We had a, we really had an awesome summer reading program this year. Again, it was back to pre-2020 numbers, not just the people who signed up with the participation in it and programs and kids actually logging their reading. This was the first year that we included adults, at least since I've been with the district library. So we had 970 people sign up, and that included 250 adults. So, and a very high percentage of people finishing the program, which was fantastic. We upgraded a bunch of technology over all of the branches, our Wi-Fi access points. Perry is the lone one. We still need to do that. That should be happening this week. But our Wi-Fi access points were outdated, so that's happening in Perry shortly, and the rest of them are done. We added Amazon Fire TVs to all of the branches, which means we can download our, and market our slides for our programs and such, all from Corona, where we do most of the marketing materials. It's all cloud-based now, so that's fantastic. And we look forward to a community reads event. We are partnering with the Chiauasi District Library in Owasso, and Waynesburg is supposed to be on board, and Vernon Library, so those are the other libraries in Chiauasi County. And we were approved for a grant, and so we're gonna hopefully, we haven't planned everything yet, but we would like to do a big community reads, and that should be fun. And that should start in January, so be on the lookout for that. It's, the Michigan Reads book is by Your Keeper's Daughter by a Michigan author, so Angelina Bulley. So we're excited about that. And then Carol, do you have anything to say?
No. I think you said it all.
Okay.
All right. Libraries are still really fantastic, and I'm happy to be working there, and I'm happy that we have so many patrons coming in. I think over the summer I probably signed up about an extra 100 patrons, new people that walk through the door, so I think that's really good. Like Jamie said, two circulation is really good, programming, everything's going really, really well. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Nope. Oh, and our Wi-Fi bench, I forgot to talk about our Wi-Fi bench. I'll keep it short and sweet. So from the O'Berry Trust that was left to the library, we purchased two benches, one for Jubilee Park and one for Veterans Memorial, and it's a solar bench, so it's, you can recharge your devices on there, either wirelessly or with a cord, without, you know, plugging the bench into anything, and eventually that will have Wi-Fi, free Wi-Fi for people who are, you know, watching a baseball game or just hanging out at the park, but right now you can charge wirelessly with it. And it withstood the tornado.
Yes, it did.
I, yeah, I was excited about that. So bench one, tornado zero.
And that's located on the south side of the driveway that comes off Lamb Street?
Yes.
So when you're sitting, you're looking toward the baseball field in the south?
Yes. And thank you DPW for helping with the concrete. Yes, we were having quite an issue finding a concrete company that would finish the project, so if it wasn't for the DPW, you know, getting that situated for us, we wouldn't have gotten them in time. So I appreciate the hard work on that.
And we thank you for that. It's a welcome addition.
Great.
Both of them. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We now have time for our ambulance special assessment presentation from Tim DeLu, who's the chairman of the CISA Board. Some call it SESA, I can't make myself do it. So CISA. And Bob Porter is our second Perry representative for that board.
Actually, yeah. Thank you, Sue. So this is a presentation, as you know, we came there some months ago in hopes that the entities that we cover for ambulance fire protection, we can move towards an increased revenue to keep us moving. So I think I'll figure out all this. I normally have a, oops, that's not good.
Uh, is there a space bar?
Space bar, okay. Thank you. Oops, I gotta go back.
Backspace.
Backspace, okay. I got lots of IT help tonight. Good. If I can see it now, we'll be all. Okay, there we go. Okay, so SESA was formed in August of 2004. Just go through a little history. We were formed in 2004. We began running EMS operations in January 2005. We currently cover approximately 200 square miles, which is a pretty large area. We include a part or all of 11 municipalities. We currently respond to approximately 2,000 EMS calls per year. We have, at the time of this writing, we had 18 full-time staff. They are international association firefighter, local 5360 members, and at that time, again, it was 90 ALS paramedics and 90 EMTs. We're currently a little short, just from a couple people moving on and actively seeking employment for, from additional people right now, so. We have our commitments, we have a mission statement, and I want to read these because they're pretty important to us. The mission of Perry Fire Rescue is committed to provide the highest level of customer service in our community through safe and rapid response to all fire, EMS, and hazard incidents to save lives, protect property, and preserve the environment. And to do that through our vision, we will uphold this mission by promoting safety and maintaining a well-equipped, highly-trained, motivated team of professional firefighters and EMS personnel while promoting fire prevention, public safety education programs, and public safety education programs. We will continually strive to meet the changing needs of our community by providing a modern, progressive, and safe department. We will accomplish this by maintaining the highest degree of readiness and focus on the professional development training of our personnel. And then we have some core values there with that. Our services are 24/7, 365 ALS, BLS transportation services. We currently staff three ALS licensed ambulances with one backup and one MFR vehicle. Actually, that's two now. We do operate out of four stations. Station one in the city of Perry, here. Station two, the Village Morris, is an MFR vehicle. Station three in the city of Duran is an ALS ambulance. Station four in Vernon Township is an ALS ambulance, and then we operate out of Burns Township as well with an MFR vehicle. And we currently service approximately 11,000 units, that's households, so basically 11,000 households in that service area. When we started, some of you may know, we took over from PMSA, the former ambulance service that was here. They were at $45 a household per year in 2005. We maintained that $45 a household per year for 15 years until 2020, when they needed to bump it up. In 2020, we increased it to $65 a household, which is broken down there to some very small numbers. But what we found is, if you see the trend in our chart, about 21, 22, we started crossing over, and our expenses started getting a little bigger than our income. So that made us go to this $65 a household, and that's what we're seeing right now as well. So our forecast, and the reason for doing this, is that an increase is necessary to compensate for the burden of rising costs due to post-COVID inflation and current economy. These are just some of the areas that we've experienced increases in. Starting over here on the right-hand side, operating expenses, the same thing you guys are all experiencing, fuel, maintenance, utilities, everything's up. We're seeing about a 15% increase in that. Moving to the left, apparatus. We quoted an ambulance in 2019 at $156,000, and we quoted one this past year, actually earlier this year, it was $257,000. And it's a two-year waitlist to get it. So our equipment that we use, the powered cot, is a cot that we use so that the professionals don't have to pick the people up. It actually picks it up and loads it for themselves, so it saves for injuries. 2017, we quoted one at $16,000. 2023, it's now up to $22,000, so a 20% increase. So right across the board, you can see that everything is going up, as you know, you know that with your own stuff. So this is what's driving us to this increase. Projected 424, the graph on the left is our income. We get about 46% of our income comes from household assessment, which is what we're here to talk about tonight, and then the other 54% comes from the actual run, transportation, the billing from that to your insurance companies. And what we jack is about 1.6 million, 1.7 almost, for income coming in at 24. The unfortunate thing is the expenditures, as you can see, a good percentage of them are wages with our full-time staff, and then the various other fillers there, were up to about 1.9, so you can see we're a little bit of a low if we don't do something different. So our proposal is decreased to $110 a household per year. This is an increase of $45 over what you're currently paying. And again, that's to break down what that increase would mean to you from where you're currently paying. And what you see from the graph is the blue line now, that's the projected, that gets us above that green line, which is our expenses. So it's not a lot above, but it's enough above that we think we can move forward. Some of the things we've done to try and help keep the cost down of that ever-increasing expenses is we've been applying to a lot of grants. We just found out today that we lost, one of them was a training grant that was gonna grant, or allow us to train 60 EMT, I'm sorry, three EMTs and three paramedics. There was $50 million available to be spread out at $75,000 increments, and we missed. We didn't get it, so just found out today. But we did just recently get a $160,000 grant, allowed some of that equipment that we needed to upgrade. We do some group purchasing, getting on with local entities, other fire departments, and just doing group stuff, so we kind of get the cost down. We're buying used equipment, got a brand-new equipment. One of the things we just bought was an ambulance, as I quoted earlier, $275,000. We found a nice one for $75,000, so we purchased that. The other thing that we're doing is we're extending our efforts of collection on the outstanding invoices. We put another layer of kind of reaching out to people and begging for them to pay. We have a lot of people that don't pay, so we have often just left it alone and don't push residents to the collection part, but sometimes we have to go a little farther now to make sure we can stay a business. So with that, if there's any questions, I'll certainly try to answer as many as I can. I hope to have Dan, our Assistant Chief of EMS, here tonight, but he's on call in his nursing job, so he's not able to make it tonight, so I'll try to answer when I can.
I'd like to just let you know, Tim, and everybody else in the room, that we do have a special guest here tonight. His name is Jeremy Black. Jeremy, could you just stand up? This is Jeremy. He's a field representative for Representative Alyssa Slotkin's office. So Jeremy, I hope you're paying attention to this.
Yes.
Does anybody have just a brief question for Tim? We are gonna move into a public hearing here shortly. Well, actually, why don't we move into the public hearing right now? Then we'll get that done, and it'll be on time. So let's just do that. Do I need a motion to do that, or do we just do it? Larry, would you make up a motion, please?
Certainly. I move that we go into a public hearing on the new ambulance assessment discussion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We are now moving into public hearing at 7:15. I'll just say, if you do have comments or questions, please stand and speak so everybody can hear you, and each individual is limited to five minutes. Raise your hand and yes.
I'd just like to make a comment.
David, hand up.
On the response time, this brother was in my house administering IV while my wife was still on the phone with the 911 operator.
Wow.
It was that quick.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you for that comment.
Those are good things.
No, you get a good job. Kind of like.
Anyone else? Comments, questions for Tim?
I got a comment.
Yes, me too.
About six weeks ago, I had to call the ambulance, you guys know I had a heart issue. I couldn't breathe, and those young men were there immediately and chucked me in. And God bless them, boys. And I end up having a, like a glorified pacemaker, as it did earlier, but I just, I just thank God for you guys. And I told them in the ambulance, I said, I thank God for you guys. We need you. And years ago, my son come to the house. He was headed to work. He was 32 years old, and he got into the house, or headed to work, and he'd become very ill. He said he couldn't breathe, and his arm was going bad, whatever, and he'd come to the house. Of course, I called the ambulance, and they took him into Sparrow. He had 16 blood clots in his lungs. One would kill you. He had seven in one and nine in the other, and it was that quick response, so I'm for this 100%.
Thank you. We have some professionals.
Yes, you do.
Those are all positive things. We have gotten a couple of letters into council and into City Hall, people who say, I don't think we should do this, there's not enough information. Well, this is the information, and we recognize that. This process is a three-month process. We present the possibility, we have the request from CISA. We have had Tim here once before for this information, and then we put the letter out there, we let people know this has been requested. We got a couple letters saying, no, don't do it, we don't have enough information, but are either of the people who sent us those letters here, if you are, please let me know. I would like to know you're here. So, yes, we need more information. We will be doing another public hearing. That's part of the process. So Nate, did you have something you wanted to share?
I was not one of those people, but if you have a question, I think it was in the mailer, there's no doubt. They use the phrase, so we can offer competitive wages. If that's true, who are we competing with?
Well, so there's.
Are we trying to draw work?
Yeah.
Try the workers to CISA that we wouldn't.
Yeah, absolutely. There are other agencies, obviously, that support medical services in local communities around. One of the things that we're battling with is the bigger cities can afford to pay bigger money, right? So it's their apt to go to Detroit or Lansing or Grand Rapids to try and get a bigger dollar, and in our smaller town can't afford that sometimes. So we do offer a good benefit program. We offer a good work environment. We aren't so busy that they're running all the time, so it's a little bit less of a stress on them. That's a good thing. A lot of the guys like that. And then our wages are comparable to other areas, so this is what we're trying to get to.
Where do we find our personnel coming from?
We do have, I guess I don't know the percentages, and I apologize for that, but we do have a lot of local folks that run in the communities that surround the departments, and then we do have some come as far as from, like down by Detroit, actually, that drive in, so. But most local, most of them are local.
I think we need to address the fact that all of the municipalities that CISA serves will be receiving the same, they'll be having the same assessment.
This is an all-for-one, yep.
And if not everybody does the assessment, what happens?
So it would depend on the entity that decides not to join. If the entity is one that we only cover a small percentage of, and that is a small percentage of that pie, then it may not hurt that number enough that we have to change. If it is a bigger entity that carries some of the load, then we would have to go back and reevaluate that number at 110, potentially have to increase it.
And what happens, Tim, if a community decides not to participate with CISA? What are their options? What?
So they have options of other entities around this could come into their area. It may require a little bit longer response time to do that versus us. There are other options, private ambulance services that pop up, and they sometimes will move into an area. That's a little less, and now, because again, the paramedic EMT workforce out there is diminishing quite a bit. People are just not doing it anymore. So we find ourselves battling, again, to try and pull from these other bigger places and to keep them coming here, to keep everything flowing.
For the folks that just came in, if you're here regarding the public hearing for a special assessment, we are in that right now.
Yes.
If you have questions for Tim, he is the chair of CISA. Do you have questions for him tonight?
I was wondering why the, and I'm sorry, related, it looks like you've already had a presentation, and probably my questions are already been answered, so.
It's okay.
Apologize for that. But I wondered why there is a change for how we're doing things? Why are we creating this new entity?
Actually, this is not a new entity. All we're doing, we've existed since 2004. So all we're doing is, currently, we are assessing a household value of $65, and what we're doing is trying to go from 65 to 110, just to cover some increased costs that we have or are occurring in the organization. Nothing is changing. Everything will stay the same. You have the same stations, the same ambulances, the same people. It's just trying to get the money to support the increased cost that we have.
Okay, and so when will the $110 increase begin?
That will start in 2024. That will be something that each entity will be voting on, and I think probably by the end of September you have to do it. I don't know exactly what the timeframe is, but the money will just be collected on the 2024 taxes.
The council will vote on that?
Yes, yes.
And there was, in the letter that we were sent, was, they were talking about 10% increase per year. This is a huge increase, like about. This is a huge increase, like about sixty, almost seventy percent increase from last year.
Yep. One of the things that we recognized over the years, and that was a slide that I first showed, is that for many years, we stuck at forty-five dollars a household, and we shouldn't have done that. We should have increased the small percentage each year. The way a special assessment works is you can assess up to ten percent without having to do all of this, go through all of this, the meetings and the special assessment districts and things like that. So it might have said up to ten percent, I hope it said up to ten percent. We would hope that we don't have to go up to ten percent, but at some point, you might have to have a small increase, just so we don't have to come back in another few years to do the same thing over. That is something that's available, or we're allowed to do with a special assessment.
Tim's presentation did break down the costs from year to year, and it showed how the expenses have gone up so much. I'm not sure if we still have any handouts of that presentation.
I don't know, but I could bring them back to you for...
Okay, we'll get some handouts of that presentation, or if you can go online to the city website, once this meeting is posted, you'll be able to see it, because it was being recorded. But if that doesn't work for you, we'll get some handouts here. Anyone else with questions for Tim? We appreciate you being here.
Yes.
We appreciate all of you being here and collecting...
That was a really good presentation.
Thank you.
Broke it down really well.
Great presentation.
I want your eyes there. Sorry about that. My IT skills are limited.
Okay, so we are going to back up a little bit and go to our post-tornado report. We've never...
We have a close...
Oh, I'm sorry. I always forget that part. I don't need another motion. I think I do. So now at seven twenty-seven, our public hearing is closed. Thank you, guys, for keeping me on track. So now we can back up and go to our first-time-ever post-tornado report. Kyle, would you like to come forward and share whatever you'd like?
Whatever I want. About tornado? Oh, okay. Well, it has been a busy week for the city in general, not just the city staff, but everyone in the city. A lot of work has been done, a lot of, I feel, a lot of relationships have been bridged or gapped or created or maintained or bolstered in some way or another. It's been excellent to see, and once again, proud to be a part of Perry and seeing members come alongside each other in helping the cleanup efforts and helping each other out. So that's been positive. I know Public Works has been nonstop. I won't speak to all their efforts, but I see them constantly out and about moving. They're not in any one spot for any amount of time at all, so they're doing a tremendous job and tremendous effort. I will say that I have been on the phone with our tornado siren representative, who is actually the President of Westshore Services out of Allendale, Michigan. They pretty much, from what I understand, have a corner on the market for tornado sirens across the United States. I've been on the phone with Jeff Dubuh Pilka in the past. He's been all the way down to Key West working. I thought he was on vacation. He was actually working on sirens down there. And I spoke to him yesterday, and he had just gotten off a plane coming from Alaska, doing work out there. So this gentleman is all over the place, and he actually is the person who was in charge of our installation of our siren and coordinating the two sirens back sometime. I should know the date or the year, but I don't recall. Anyway, Jeff assured me that he is going to be in the area next week, and he is going to assess a location for the replacement siren. We could call it a new siren, but it's really replacing what was destroyed Friday night. I'm going to find an optimal place for that, and we'll just be utilizing insurance money to essentially relocate that siren in a new spot with the most upgraded technology that Westshore provides. I say that because I've given several reports back to council in the last month, few months, several months, about a project that Chawassee County is a part of with Westshore Services to connect all over the sirens so that they can be triggered remotely by a warning or in some other way, so that it's not up to each individual entity that owns the siren. He promised me yesterday that our siren, when it's installed, would be to that level or that caliber to connect with that project when it's completed. We are moving along at the county level with that and looking to, we found a tower that we're going to utilize, and just have to do all the specs to make sure that signals and frequencies and all that stuff gel with what's already being utilized on that tower. So we're moving along with that. I don't have any TA on that project. I believe that probably the county project will be finalized and in place before we get our new siren up and going, but I don't know that. I really can't speak to that, but that's just my best guess. So Kevin Tyler from Public Works has always been, has also been in touch with Jeff from Westshore, and he spoke to him about the siren. So we've both been in communication with him and look at that up and going as quickly as possible. In the meantime, we are encouraging people to sign up for Smart 911 or Rave and get their information out there so that a mass notification can be sent out through the county, through those means. I would encourage also, as the mayor has encouraged people, to look to your local weather app or to your local weather app, I'm sorry, local news app for weather notifications through that as well. I will tell you, generally speaking, as weather moves west to east, you don't want to be on the east side of the state getting notifications of serious weather threats. So Lansing may be a good choice for any kind of notification system. Any questions for me?
I think just the point you might make, Kyle, I believe that our city website has been updated and refreshed with how it go about getting access to the Smart 911 rave system.
Yep, I spoke with Megan this afternoon, and we actually have a link on there that you can sign up and just fill out the information.
Absolutely encourage people to do that.
Yep, most definitely.
That can go to your cell phone, your smartphone, it can go to your landline phone, it can also go to your email. So that's a good place, there's no extra charge for it, it's through the county. Any other questions for Kyle specifically regarding the tornado? Thank you, Kyle. He's going to come back up and talk to us again shortly. I did get an email from Chawassee County Health Department. They were directing us to some community resources, and they did send us a flyer that Megan has posted to the website. It says, "Chawassee County residents, if you need community resources, please dial 211 or 866-561-2500. That's available 24/7." And that came through the United Way. So if you're in need, please feel free to reach out. If you don't remember all that, feel free to call City Hall, and we'll give you the I do have some commendations I'd like to hand out. The purpose of this letter is to formally and publicly commend all members of the DPW. John, where are you? I can't see you. Oh, there you are. Kevin Tyler, John Souter, Eric Smith, Jim Dunn, and Joe Rock, for the excellent service they provided to the city of Perry in response to the tornado that damaged our community August eleventh. While these staff members always do an excellent job, they truly went above and beyond, exceeding all expectations, both the evening of the storm and every day since. Staff were on-site in less than thirty minutes, assessing damage, checking systems, and ensuring our community was safe by coordinating with emergency responders and utility providers. In the days since the storm, there has been a constant stream of activity coordinating the cleanup of downed trees, debris, and assessing damage as we work to put the city back together. Their hard work and dedication to our city should not and does not go without recognition. Many thanks.
Thank you.
This letter of commendation. The purpose of this letter is to formally and publicly commend members of the City of Perry Police Department. Chief Kyle Walker, Judge Mike Monroe, and Officer Sean Hennich for the excellent service they provided to the city of Perry in response to the tornado. While these officers always do an excellent job, they truly went above and beyond, exceeding all expectations, both the evening of the storm and every day since. The police department played an integral role in the coordination of the emergency response to the events of that evening. In the days since the storm, there's been a constant stream of activity assessing damage as we work to put the city back together, as well as developing the Perry Emergency Response Team and preparation of future emergent events. Their hard work and dedication to our city should not and does not go without recognition. Many thanks to you all. Megan Galbraith. The purpose of this letter is to formally and publicly commend City of Perry Treasurer Megan Galbraith. I have to say, Megan wrote the other two letters. I copied hers to write hers. So if you know what that says...
I sure do.
Thank you very much. Shirley Smith. What a way to get christened into being the city clerk. These girls were not only doing their job, they were out there picking up trees falling on the ground, and they've just been above and beyond. Shirley, thank you so much. We have posted letters of thanks to others. We just didn't have everybody's name. Larry and his wife composed letters of thanks to generally thank the businesses, residents, people from out of town. We just don't know everybody to thank, so thank you all. It's been quite heartwarming to see all the help that's come forward. We'll now move into the part of our meeting where it is public comment. If you have any public comment to bring, not maybe necessarily related to the special assessment. Is anyone here for public comment? We'll move then to communications. Shirley has communication for us.
So I, actually, two of the items have been already read, the emergency notification system and the 211 flyer that Sue read. I also handed out two letters of concern from two residents and the ambulance assessment, so you have those. And I also have an email from Steve Wallace. It says, "I don't know if Sue Hammond, please accept this email as my official resignation from both the Perry Claiming Commission and City Council effective immediately. Respectfully, Stephen Wallace." And that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have, because of that, an open seat once again on City Council, so if anyone's interested in serving in that open seat, please be in touch with me or one of our council Moving then into committee reports. Who'd like to go first?
I'll just let everybody know that we had a lot of discussion at our last meeting with regard to animal slash pet ordinance, and at that time, we approved putting a cross-discipline task force together to address a proposal ultimately come forward. I'll just let everybody know that those task force members have been identified, and we are beginning to move forward with that effort. It's going to take a little time with a few meetings, but we are up and running with the task force people identifying.
Thank you, Larry. We have another committee report.
Yep, just a quick update from the Personnel Committee. We met earlier this week to discuss the position of office assistant that we talked about last meeting and review applicants. Applicants are currently being contacted for interviews, so we'll be moving forward with that.
Thank you very much. Moving then on to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented, payment be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Discussion of emergency services, that was on here before Friday night, you guys. That's been a matter of discussion at our council meetings for the last several meetings. But I did ask Kyle if he would speak to what we can anticipate as far as emergency notification, and maybe share a little bit more with us about the newly-formed Perry Emergency Response Team.
Yeah, I really don't know if I can speak much more to the siren or notification systems at this point. I would just encourage people to look into those and go ahead and sign up for them so that they have everything right at their fingertips. I know most people don't, will go more than four or five feet away from their phone at any given point throughout the day, maybe even at night. So maybe a notification system that rings right into your phone would be the best way to do that. But as far as anything moving forward with emergency services here in the city, we did have a post-incident debrief with a lot of the people that were a part of the Emergency Operations Center from Friday night. And a part of that, we decided that we need to meet on a regular basis to discuss how we are not only just pushing information out in a crisis, but how we're organized and how we're communicating amongst ourselves, not just, you know, the residents or the community. So from that, we decided to organize the PERT, I guess is the best way to call it, the Perry Emergency Response Team. And so a part of that, we have fire, law enforcement, Public Works, City Hall. We also have a community member, Genevieve Cutrell, who was an emergency manager for Michigan State University. She was a tremendous resource for us Friday night and actually days after. She's going to be a part of that, and we've also reached out to the school. Rod Adair is in charge of buildings and grounds at the school level, and the school is very quick to respond to me and to the mayor and to others Saturday mornings, saying, any buildings or anything that we have, is at your disposal, you have keys, go ahead and use it. And so because of the infrastructure that the school provides as potentially a shelter or just storage space, or, you know, water, cooking, anything along those lines, we felt it important to include them as well. So they're going to be a part of the team, and we're going to probably not meet all too regularly, but we are going to meet so that we have everyone's phone numbers, we have a good line of communication amongst ourselves, and so that we can talk about anything that's potentially going on or potential concerns, and just make sure that we're moving forward as far as a responsible and adequate response to anything like this, I think. So I was excited about that. I was really glad to see all those entities come together. I don't believe I missed anyone.
Jeff Weiss from...
Oh, our own, very own emergency manager was here at our debrief, Jeff Weiss. And he's a tremendous resource, coming from England County as the emergency manager, but coming to Chawassee with all that... but coming to Chiwasi with all that experience, but also those relationships in England. He actually brought them with him Friday. So we had a good off-horning from outside of the county to Perry Friday night as well because of Jeff. So grateful for that. And Jeff is more than willing to partake and be a part of the team, so I'm excited about that.
Great. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments for Kyle? Anything you'd like him to be aware of? Thank you, Kyle. Thank you. I would suggest that in regard to our next item, discussion of building the general fund, we do know action taken once again and move on. But we will, with the information we have now available, have discussion and approval, hopefully, of a bench and a plaque and a tree in memory of Devin Miller.
I have prices on trees from Cottage Gardens or Schuiches in Lansing or to South Lansing. So these are wholesale prices. These are not, somebody can walk in and buy this tree for the price. But the first one's ivory silk that I suggested before, the tree lilac, flowering tree, two-inch caliper. It's not huge, not small, $275 plus tax. That wouldn't include any planting or delivery, anything like that, so we'd have to figure that out. There's another one that's a nice ornamental tree. It's a magnolia. The variety is Jane. It's a very pretty tree, $220. Then, after the tornado, my little pink flag made it through the tornado.
It did. I looked.
I thought maybe we'd do a larger tree, a beech, river-sized, purple leaf, so it's color all year, well, all summer. It's a little bit bigger, two and a half caliper. He would discount that one to $375 from $460 because he wants to move them. Beautiful tree, though. And it might help replace some of the canopy out there. And the other suggestion for that larger caliper tree would be a tulip tree. It does get a flower in the spring. It's not very showy, but the leaves themselves are the shape of a tulip flower, hence gets its name. Two, two and a half caliper, $300 for that. So it's kind of, it's the pleasure of council, what they want to see. If it's a flowering ornamental or if we want to try to replace some of our canopy that we lost.
Discussion? Megan and Shirley, feel free to jump in on this discussion.
I personally liked the lilac tree. What about you, Megan?
With any of them?
Oh, with any of them. I can find with any of them.
She doesn't want to make a decision.
But I did like, I just looked that one up online and I did like that.
It's a very pretty tree. I'll look at that one.
Megan, can you share? Oh, yes. Yes, your opinion.
Has there been any more thought about getting money for some of the hurt that was put here? It was said that maybe you would look for state or federal funds. Any, any, like that happening?
We are still looking into those things, yes, absolutely. We do have insurance adjusters that have been on-site. It appears that our insurance is going to cover everything. It was all insured for replacement. The thing that we don't have insurance for is all the trees, the beautiful trees, that were uprooted and damaged and have had to be taken down because of the damage throughout Second Street and Third Street and various other places, a little on Green Street. So there's been some discussion about possibly forming a fund where people can donate money to help people with tree replacement. But we haven't felt like we're at a point where we need federal money because we have insurance to cover it. But we're still in touch, certainly with Alyssa Slotkin's office. Jeremy from her office is here tonight and we have, will continue to have contact with them. So yes, we'll definitely reach out if we find that we need that.
I can tell you that a lot of trees on our property came this way. And there was a lot of activity by some of our personal field to spend hours and hours of getting that stuff out of the way.
Yes.
And some of it very near the, some of the...
The debris from the buildings? Is that what, yeah? We're still cleaning. We're still picking up, cleaning up. Yeah, that'll, it'll be a while, but we'll get it all, we'll get it all cleaned up. Now, where is your property?
It's west of town.
Okay.
A lot of the, we had to move the trees all over the place off of our property.
Oh, I see.
And we had a lot of damage toward the... What did I say? The, the, that long time ago that they put the, 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 took the trees out from various places and we had trees that were very close to going into that. I will probably draft you a letter on...
That would be very helpful, yes. Thank you very much. We do have resources, and if you could maybe outline for me what your needs are, we might be able to put you in touch.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for speaking to that. Back to our decision about the memorial for Devin.
Can we get a say on that tiny tree, by?
Yeah, speak up. Yes, speak up. Okay. What kind of tree do you think?
I think that pretty one, maybe it's popular, the purple leaves.
Oh, the beech?
The beech.
The only problem with the beech is it's a hardwood and it's going to take forever to grow.
They grow slow.
Yes, they do. They grow slow. We're not going to be around it. She'd get very tall.
That's true, but the meaning of life is to plant a tree that you will not sit under and shave.
Can I say one thing?
Yep.
I did want to say that we have received a $500 anonymous donation toward this project.
And I've received calls and other communications stating that people would like to donate, but I've had them hold off because I didn't know where we were going to put it yet. So Megan's, Megan will help with that, identifying that fund. So yes, we will have a fund. I would like to see us be able to, to use that to beautify the city again. But go ahead with discussion. So we've got lots of ideas about the type of tree. Maybe we should just put them all in a bucket and draw one out.
That's why I limited it to four.
You can go with a slow-growing tree and a fast-growing tree.
Well, we could.
So what about this bench and plaque, too?
Yeah. Megan, can you speak to the cost of the bench and plaque?
Yeah, it's the same one that was just installed by the Stiff family. So it was about $1,600 for the bench, the plaque, and the shipping. So our total estimate is about $2,000 because it leaves room for a cement pad for wherever we place it, if it's not a place that already has a support setting. So I'm here, $2,000.
I might suggest that we had had discussion previously about the bench, and then we also talked about possibly a tree and wanted to have that in memory of Devin. And her favorite color, if I remember correctly, was something in the white family, possibly?
I know she likes sunflowers, so I don't know.
Okay, a flowering tree?
I just like flowers.
I would suggest, at least I thought would be, that we select a tree that is going to be a flowering tree in her memory. And as we clean up the area, we may have to put in a couple more, although they may be slower growing trees, a couple more trees or whatever to replace what we've lost in
Any other discussion from council, comments from the peanut gallery there? Anything?
I have one thing to add real quick, Sue.
Yep.
Consumers Energy has an annual tree grant. Unfortunately, that window closed July 14th. So I did reach out to the organization that operates or runs that grant program. They'll give up to $3,000 annually to cities in their service area. And I think it was $300 a tree. So I have reached out to them and asked if they have any resources for us because of our situation. If not, we can look to next year.
Was that Consumers Energy?
It was, yes.
Okay.
Consumers, but it was operated by a nonprofit.
Okay.
To disseminate the funds.
Thank you. Counsel, if we're ready to make a decision here, we do have a prepared motion that might need to be tweaked.
Any more discussion on that tree? I'm kind of in favor of the lilacs, Bill.
I have given you my four picks. So I'm okay with any one that you pick.
Okay.
Honestly, they're all very, I wouldn't have picked them if I didn't think they would work here.
Make the motion, pick the tree.
I approve that we approve the purchase of a bench and plaque from Tree Top Products to be placed at the Veterans Memorial Park in memory of Devin Miller, priced at $2,000 to exceed $2,000. Tree will be, what's the name of the one?
Ivory silk.
Ivory silk.
Lilac tree.
I'll look for a second.
Okay, we have a motion for Mike, seconded by Chad, for the lilac tree. And we'll certainly look to the other types of trees that we've discussed when we're ready to reforest what we've lost. But for this in memorial of Devin Miller, the motion is on the table. All those in favor of that, yes, Bob?
Sorry, I just thought of something. What was the total that you said, Mike?
$2,000.
Isn't the bench $2,000?
I didn't add the price of the tree in there because I wasn't sure what.
You can tweak that price.
We can have a second motion for the tree, and this is just the bench?
Let's just...
Let's just amend it for $2,500.
There you go. Okay, just want to make sure.
Chad's good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Yep.
So our motion has an amendment to $2,500 for both the bench and the plaque and the tree altogether. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So Bob, if you could give that tree...
I will call them, get it arranged, and we'll figure out how to pay for it, get payment through them.
And Megan, you'll order the bench, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Moving into new business, a very sad thing that we have to accept, a resignation of Steve Wallace.
I approve that we accept with regret the resignation of Council Member Steve Wallace from Council and Planning Commission and extend our appreciation for his service effective immediately.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, a second from Larry Eba and all of us. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have some appointments this evening. The first one I'd like to make is in regard to the replacement for the council seat of Mindy Galbavi. And that person who came to me is City Resident Kena Dunn. Kena, could you stand up so everybody can see who you are? Kena and I had a long conversation. Right after the seat opened up, she stepped right forward and said, "I'd like to do that." We did have another gentleman who had also stepped forward for that, but then he had to step back. So Kena said she'd be willing, so she is here. And I appoint Kena Dunn to the City Council, replacing Mindy Galbavi for a three-year term, expires in 2026. For the record, though, she will actually, term expire when the 2024 election happens. Then she will need to decide if she wants to run for that position or not. So just to clarify.
I approve the mayor's appointment of Kena Dunn to the City Council, replacing Mindy Galbavi for the three-year term expiring 2026.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, a second from Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Kena, if you would come forward, Shirley's going to swear you in, so you can take your place without being on the table. Megan, would you catch your picture there?
Thank you. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Perry.
Of the City of Perry.
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
As elected.
As elected.
Council member.
Council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Kittl stepped forward at our last council meeting two weeks ago when I had announced that we had an empty seat on the SADA board, and he said he would be willing to serve in that position. Robert, are you here? Yes, please, all right. This is Rob. He said he would be willing to serve, so I hereby appoint Robert Kittl to the SADA board for a term expiring October 2024, looking for council approval.
I approve that we approve the mayor's appointment of Robert Kittl to the SADA board, term expiring October 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Robert, if you'll come forward, Shirley will swear you in.
She's a lot tonight.
Hopefully, I'll do a little bit better today.
I won't be any better, so.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Amer, of Michigan.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Perry.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Perry.
And that I will faithfully perform...
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties as SADA.
Duty as SADA.
Board member.
Board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
And now I did my best to get Dave Cleaves to serve on council, but he has other things that would prevent him from serving about six months of the year. So when we had an opening on the Planning Commission, I called him and he said he is willing to do that. So here tonight, I would like to appoint Dave Cleaves, if you'll stand, Dave, to the Planning Commission, replacing Steve Wallace for the term expiring January 2026. Motion?
I approve the mayor's appointment of Dave Cleaves to the Planning Commission, replacing Steve Wallace for the term expiring January 2026.
Second.
We have a motion by Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Dave, if you'll come forward, Shirley will swear.
Okay, you can speak up.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I solemnly support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Perry.
The City of Perry.
And that I will faithfully perform...
Faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the planning commission.
Of the planning commission.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Thank you to all of you. And I'll just reiterate, we do now have an open seat on city council. So if anyone's interested in serving in that position, please be in touch. Moving now to possible approval of the resolution to set the public hearing to create a new ambulance special assessment. This vote is not to set or approve or start billing out the ambulance assessment. Please understand that. This is still an information sharing process. This resolution would set another public hearing so people can come forward. Hopefully Tim will be able to come back or somebody from CISA to do the presentation again, answer questions again. We absolutely want to make sure that all people have the opportunity to see the information available concerning that. So on our agenda, we're looking for possible approval of a resolution to set the public hearing to create a new ambulance special assessment. Any discussion from council concerning that?
I'll look for a motion.
Yeah.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Perry City Council has held a public hearing on the estimate of the cost to the City of ambulance service on the question of creating a special assessment district on the property to be especially benefited by a special assessment to defray the cost to the city ambulance service. Therefore, the City of Perry does hereby determine to create a special assessment district consisting of the entire City of Perry to be known as the Ambulance Services Special Assessment District of 2023. The city does further determine the amount of the special assessment levy to be approximately $118,000, $118,470. Further, the City of Perry does hereby direct the city assessor to spread the assessment levy on the lands and premises within the filing, within the district as follows. Each parcel of property within the district having at least one unit as defined below shall be assessed at a rate not to exceed $110 per unit. A unit is defined as any of the following. A, a single-family residence. B, a mobile home being used as a dwelling. C, a residential apartment in a multiple-family structure or a multiple-use structure. D, a commercial or business property with zero to five full-time, full-time employees. An additional assessment shall be placed on any such parcel for any multiple of five full-time employees or part thereof. For purposes of computing the assessment, under this definition, a full-time employee shall be counted for each 40 hours wages paid by the employer in the week preceding this hearing. It is further determined that the City of Perry shall hold a public hearing on objections to the distribution of the special assessment levy to be held on the sixth day of September 2023 at 7:15 at the Perry City Hall. The city clerk is directed to mail notice of said hearing by first-class mail to each owner of or party in interest and property located within the proposed special assessment district whose name appears upon the last local tax assessment records of the city at least 10 days before the date of said hearing. City clerk is further directed to publish in a newspaper of general circulation in the city, a notice of said hearing. Said publication shall be published not less than five days before the hearing. The city assessor is directed to provide the assessment role to the city clerk at least 10 days before the date of the said hearing. Said role to be available for public inspection by any interested parties.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So our next public hearing will be September 6th, 2023, 7:15 here at City Hall for information sharing, questions. And then we will go from there. Next on our agenda, we have possible approval of a resolution for nine-day early voting location. Shirley's going to tell us all about this.
So I went to a meeting in Southern Township a couple of weeks ago and basically we have to offer nine-day early voting starting next year, 2024. And so we have to have our election inspectors. We have to buy a tabulator. There's just a great expense. The county clerk is offering to have the nine-day early voting there. She, there's five cities, 16 townships in Chiwasi County. For the, just the payroll that she has figured for these nine days, it would cost $9,810 just for the payroll for the inspectors. That doesn't include the tabulator. She hasn't given me that price, I think. Did I say it was around $6,500?
Yes.
Okay. So right now, without the tabulator, $467.14 per election, per jurisdiction is what she's estimating the payroll to be.
And that number again, as well?
$467.14.
Okay.
And I, I just think that we should go along with that. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, six townships that have already, SADA board has approved that. So I'm just asking that you guys approve that.
So our option would be to have that nine-day early voting here, buy our own tabulator.
Yep.
Pay our own staff for nine days or join together at the county level with other municipalities sharing in the cost of that.
And it will always be like that. So the nine days will always be over there.
And corporate, and.
And I'm not exactly sure the facility.
Don't know yet.
Yeah, that was kind of.
But at the county facilities.
Somewhere, yes.
Discussion, counsel? Questions for Shirley?
I think it's smart to get a board.
Our share is roughly $500, $467.
Our shares?
Our share is $467.
That's like what the payroll portion of it, to pay their inspectors.
And then what are the tabulators?
Yeah, the tabular is like $6,500. You have to have two separate tabulators, one for the nine-day early and one for your regular voting.
Any other questions for Shirley, counsel? Looking for.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Perry City has considered the contract with Chiwasi County for the purposes of having the Chiwasi County clerk hold the nine-day early voting for the upcoming elections starting in 2024. It is hereby determined that the court for the City of Perry is directed to enter into said contract with the Chiwasi County clerk and the contract form substantially comporting to the contract providing for holding the nine-day early voting for the upcoming elections starting in 2024.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, we have on our agenda a couple of Department of Public Works items. John's going to come forward and hopefully be able to answer any questions. We have Kevin, our superintendent, was not able to be here tonight. His wife had surgery today. So John is here to answer questions. You have in your packets the information about these items.
So the first thing is the, some chlorine, a chlorine monitor, some gas sensors for the water treatment plant. We have, I'm sure Kevin briefed you on it, maybe a month ago, a joint failure inside the building and some equipment was damaged. So this is the replacement parts for that.
This is a result of the water.
Infiltration to the components.
So this is a SLC meter, is that what it's called?
That's the company that we're sourcing the, the products from.
All right.
The company that we did go through, the man retired and we kind of had lackluster service. Most of the costs are generally the same between them because ATI kind of sets the prices.
I move that we approve a quote from SLC, meter LLC in the amount of $5,336 for replacement parts for the water treatment plant.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now for the water treatment plant replacement parts.
These are parts that we need to have on hand that we felt we should. So this stuff is not necessarily immediately going into service. It's there to replace pieces.
If they fail.
In the event of another situation like this. We had some, but not enough. So I think that you guys have three quotes in front of you. My, my personal view, I think, is the most cost-effective one with Ferguson. We do pay a little bit of stuff from them already. We try to get things, you know, somewhat local, but. So that's, that's what I'm going to recommend tonight is the Ferguson quote.
All three have basically the same parts. They're just different costs.
Correct.
Correct. That's what I thought it was.
So we're, we're not ordering all of, from everyone. We're just ordering one. I just wanted to make sure.
I move that we approve the quote from Ferguson Water Works in the amount of $2,293.89 for the replacement parts to have on hand for the water treatment plant.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, John. Do we have any other business that may come before council at this time? We have any other public comment? Items for our next agenda. Let's move forward the discussion regarding building the general fund. I don't know. We'll see how it might work on that. Delabor that. Any other items for the next agenda? Well, if you think of anything, you can let Shirley know. Now at 8:18, which is a lot earlier than I thought it would be, this meeting is adjourned.